Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day of Alodion Morse Premium, Ante Callarotta. The academic at ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 159, Class 159. What did we learn in Class 158? We'll always remember that right now, we're starting to talk about decolonization, right? Because that should be the order of the day. Decolonization is the order of the day. Why do I say that? Because once you know your nationality, what are the next steps? You have to decolonize, right? You have to rise up with said nationality. So nationality is not the order of the day. Decolonization is the order of the day for who? Moroccans. Because Moroccans already know who they are. So now, Moroccans have to start checking boxes to decolonize, right? If we want our liberation, what do we have to do? We have to have our dedication to our own state, i.e. our own country. We have to start understanding what? We have to be patriots of our own country. We have to have patriotism. We have to have love for our own mother country, our own homeland. You gotta stop saying, "This is our land, this is our land." Okay, what's the name of the land? Because if you tell me the name of the land, now you're gonna tell me the name of what? The country. You just can't keep using the generic word, "This is our land." What does that mean? It means nothing when it comes to law. That's your opinion. What's your legal argument to prove it? So speaking of legal argument, as we continue to talk about decolonization, as you notice in Class 158, the energy is a little bit higher, right? We're more aggressive in terms of our approach to talk about the rule of law, right? We're opening up in the month of January 2025 to set the tone because we're preparing for His Majesty the Sultan to start to send his correspondent letters to the European states. His Majesty the Sultan, Abdul al-Khabir, is preparing to send his political correspondents, more than likely starting in February 2025. So as we open up in the first month of the year of 2025, it's important for ANPAC study session in Class 158, 159 to start leading towards what? Two things. One, as Moors, we have to start understanding the fundamentals of law. Because if you want to decolonize, that means you must also put together a government. That way, you can do what? Govern your own people collectively. That's number one, we need our own government. And number two, we gotta decolonize and learn how to utilize the enforcement of the rule of law during decolonization. So we're letting the whole world know we're studying law and we're gonna enforce said law. So you must understand, in the month of January 2025 and then slowly getting into the month of February 2025, we are preparing for His Majesty the Sultan to let the whole world know that the office of Sultan has been reinstated, that the Empire Morocco is no longer in a shallow breathe, and that the Moors government is now ready to take their rightful place to govern amongst the affairs of Moors and also to be a value add, to be an asset to the United Nations and all other member states. So we're gonna continue to be a little bit more aggressive as we move forward because decolonization is not something that's all about apple pies. Not apple pie during decolonization. As you understood, as we read on the Resolution 1514 of 1960, right, was a decolonization, United Nations Resolution, what did it talk about in the preamble? That decolonization creates what? A crisis. So you must be prepared for the good fight. What type of fight? It's a pen war. It is 100% a pen war. Because the pen is mightier than the sword. And what is the pen all about? The rule of law. No one is above the law. Nobody on planet Earth. And the colonizers know that the Moors not only have international law to support them, but also the Moors have their Moors treaties to support them. So they already know our pen is very powerful, especially when it's in the hands of His Majesty the Sultan and the Moors government. This must be understood. So if we start to take steps forward during decolonization, understand it's going to create what? A crisis. You must understand this. It will not be an easy task. It will become what's commonly known as an arduous task. What does arduous mean? It's going to be complicated. However, what's gonna prevail? The rule of law with pen. And this is what the colonists are concerned about because the colonists have been going all around planet Earth telling everybody about what? The rule of law. The colonists have been going around planet Earth telling everybody it's all about what? Democracy. That you got to set your government up through a democracy, right? The colonists have been going around the whole world saying it's all about self-determination. It's all about human rights. And guess what's gonna happen? Now, when the Empire Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan comes to the table, guess what the Sultan's gonna tell the Europeans? "We're gonna enforce everything you were saying, that you said was all based in good faith. We're gonna test what's commonly known as good faith." What is good faith? Good faith is basing the promise of contracts. And what is a contract? International law. What's a contract? Treaty law. What's a contract? Any international agreement that's signed between countries and states. What's a contract? Constitutions. These are all contracts. What else is a contract? Statutory law. What else is a contract? Common law. These are all contracts commonly known under public law. What's public law? Is laws that come from states. So therefore, when you start understanding the Vienna Convention on the Law Treaties of 1969, Article 26 tells you it's all about pacta surpervenda, which means the promise. Promises must be kept. Kept of what? Treaties and international law. So you must understand, as we start to move forward, in the year 2025, we're gonna become more aggressive with our resolve to bring to a speedy end of colonialism and all its manifestations. That must be understood. Let's get to the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. What does paramount mean? First, without the Constitution, the Moors were not able to enforce their own treaties. You had no right to enforce your treaties. Because who's the only person that can enforce the Moors treaties? That is the Empire Morocco. That is the only proper party name. So you must understand, all the Moors need a constitution such as ANPAC's constitution of Alodion Morse Premium, Ante Callarotta, but always understand that as an example, ANPAC's constitution comes under the sovereignty of a country called what? Okay, now let's take a look at the constitution of what? The constitution for the Empire of Morocco. That is the proper party name of all the treaties. Did it say the Empire of Moorish Americans? No. Did it say the Empire of Indians? No. Did it say the Empire of Blacks? No. Did it say the Empire Hebrew Israelites? No. Did it say the Empire Pan-Africans? No. Did it say the Empire of Cherokees? No. Did it say the Empire of African-Americans? No. Did it say the Empire of HBCU or the Empire of NAACP or the Empire of Black History Month? No, no, no! This is the problem amongst our people. We don't even know who our biological mother is. From an abstract perspective, she, her name, is the Empire of Morocco. That's your mother's name. From a constitutional perspective, from a country perspective, that's your biological mother. You never knew it. And the ones who did know it, ignored her and chose to come up with Nondigger and misnomer names that then what? Distracted the people away from their own biological mother. So you must understand that all the Europeans, all this time, knew that the Moors were not pledging their allegiance. What type of allegiance? Political allegiance. By application to their own mother, which is the Empire of Morocco. Europeans always knew it. So all the Moors have to understand this is the constitution for the Empire Morocco. The constitution was paramount because you cannot be a party to our own Moors treaties without a constitution. Because the constitution, what you call fundamental law, everything starts with the constitution. If you don't have a constitution, state constitution, that means you cannot ratify treaty. You can't become a party to a treaty without the constitution. Why is the constitution so important? It's because the constitution recognizes us. How are you demanding respect on planet Earth when you didn't even have a constitution that recognized yourself? You wasn't even respecting yourself because you didn't even have a constitution that recognized yourself. Once you recognize yourself, as we come together as we, the people, under the nationality of Moroccan, because Resolution 1514 of 1960, what is the title of it? It's the Declaration on the Granting of Independence. To who? Colonial countries and peoples. Do you know why the word "country" came first before the word "people"? Because this is your mama. And your mother names her children. You don't name your damn self. Your mother names you. And what if the Empire Morocco named her children? If her name's Morocco, her children name what? Moroccan. All her children have the same name. Moroccan. And you fail to understand what is the permanent intent of coming home to your mother? And so you get your own proper free national name. How do you get a free national name if your mother didn't give it to you? At what? Birth. That's why they call it birth of a nation. Because in order to have a nationality, you get your nationality from her. So as we start to open up in January 2025, we're getting a proper concept and context. Concept starts in the head. It becomes manifested when you put in what? Proper context. That text, the words. So the concept and context, you have a visual in your head first. It's like an engineer who comes up with plans in his head first before it does what? He puts his think to what? Ink. But if you don't know who you are, you're gonna come up with the wrong plans. You come up with the wrong name and then you wonder why you couldn't get access to liberation. Because you had the wrong name of the nation. You must understand, the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, put the obligation directly on the Moors individually. It did not put the obligation on the Empire Morocco to come look for its children. Article 15, Paragraph 1 of the Treaty of Madrid says what? "Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country's jurisdiction shall return to Morocco." The onus was on you, you, and you, all of us. It was on me to return to her. She wasn't gonna come looking for you. You got stuck in lost and found. And you was found by who? The colonists, and they adopted you. They gave you the name of who? Their mother. But you're a red-haired stepchild. So you have to understand, Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, put the onus directly on the individual Moor. And now you gotta come back and recognize her. If you don't recognize her, she will not recognize you. Well, how do you get that recognition done? It's called a pen. What about the pen? It's application. Watch this. So the Empire Morocco is, I have it on screen, and it's three branches of government. You got the Empire Morocco, that's your mother. You have to return to her. We'll talk about the application in just a second. The Empire Morocco is the external sovereign, what? An independent state. Not just sovereign. Cherokee tribes are sovereign. But are they independent? No. They come under the jurisdiction of who? The United States. Therefore, they're sovereign, they get to what? Self-govern. But who's got jurisdiction over them? The United States. Therefore, Cherokee tribes are not independent, but they're sovereign. Guess who else is sovereign? Let's pick one of the 50 Union States. That says State Alabama. State Alabama is sovereign. But are they independent? No. Who's independent? United States of America. That's the sovereign and independent state that governs over who? Alabama. United States of America as a name governs over who? Cherokee states. Because Cherokees, even though they say they have reservations, go look at the treaty, they call it what? Indian countries. So Indian tribes sign treaties with the United States of America. Therefore, when they sign those treaties, they recognize the Indian tribes as internal states. As long as those Indian tribes came under the jurisdiction of the United States of America, Cherokee tribes recognize the United States of America as what? The external sovereign independent state. That's what Cherokee tribes do. This is why I'm trying to warn all these black people who keep wanting to be Indian. It's a lateral movement. You're going from being a black American to a black Cherokee. Lateral movement. You still under the jurisdiction of the United States. You ain't went nowhere fast. So the Empire Morocco is a sovereign and independent state, i.e. country. Because that's the highest status, political status of our mother, is the Empire Morocco. That's her. Okay, that's tall father. Okay. Who's her state? The Sultan. The office of Sultan is he, his. His Majesty the Sultan. That's the way it's written in the treaties. It says, "His Majesty the Sultan." That brings balance and order. Empire Morocco, her. Sultan, he. That's yin and yang. Brings balance and order. To who's your mother? Empire Morocco. Who is your political father? The Sultan of the Empire Morocco. That's bringing the family back together. They keep saying, "Black people can't keep a family together." And guess what? We're gonna prove the whole world wrong. Because we're bringing this, our mother, Empire Morocco, copper-colored people, copper-colored mother, copper-colored Sultan. Bringing the family back together. But in every family, the mother and father puts who in charge? The oldest children of the family. Who's the oldest children in the family who come to politics? Okay, you got the executive branch. You got what? Legislative branch. You got judicial branch. Those are the oldest children of the family. Who govern over who? Everybody else who comes slightly beneath it, that's a little bit younger. They're who? So now, the executive branch has a prime minister that oversees the wisest council of nothing but governors. The executive branch, right? Because these are your oldest children. The executive branch has a Speaker of the House who now oversees the Sayyara council. These are all your legislators. Then you got a judicial branch, which is the oldest child, one of the three oldest children, overseeing all other judges, the associate judges. So you have a chief judge that oversees all of her, all other associate judges. That's family. Under one name called what? Moroccans. What's our consequenti name? What's our blood name? Moroccans. What's your family name? Moroccan. That's your nationality. You can't have a nationality without a nation. But what is a nation? A country. What is a country? That is what? The sovereign state. It's the country. But your sovereign state wants to be independent so they have the highest status of international law. Cherokee states, i.e. Cherokee tribes, are not allowed to sign treaties abroad. You ever seen a Cherokee sign a treaty with Cuba? No. You ever seen a Cherokee tribe sign a treaty with Mexico? No. Why? Internal states cannot sign treaties with countries. Only countries can sign treaties with other countries. Only the mother can sign treaties with other mothers on planet Earth. But not her internal children. Her children can't do it, but she can. The Moors never do none of this stuff. But we're gonna learn today. As we continue to study, I'm pausing here. I'm taking my time in my opening for a reason. I'm setting the tone of how we're gonna move forward in the year 2025. We're gonna enforce the rule of law. Because once you understand the rule of law, the next word is, okay, what law rules? The next question, okay, what's the subject matter? If you're talking decolonization, then what law rules? International law. Because international law governs the rules and procedures of decolonization. That is under what's commonly known as the supremacy clause. So when you hear the United States talking about Article 6, Clause 2, they say, "It's a supremacy clause." Okay, next question, okay, then what's supreme? I'll teach the Moors about truly what is supremacy clause over the next couple of classes, just keep that in mind. What is supreme supremacy clause? Was basing the subject matter. If you're talking decolonization, the supremacy clause is the clauses of international law. That law becomes supreme. If you got a dispute between two countries, then the supremacy clause becomes what? The treaties you sign between the two countries. The verbiage, the language of the treaty becomes the supreme clauses that you read to settle disputes. If you're talking domestic law, you're talking about the constitution. The constitution becomes a supremacy clause to deal with your domestic affairs. But everything operates off the constitution. There is no treaty without the constitution. Because only states can be parties to treaties. So you need the constitution to be a party to the treaty. You need the constitution, which is created distinct, to be parties to international law resolutions. You need the constitution or they lack what? Statutes through the legislative branch. You need the constitution in order to have a judicial branch. That way, you can then rule on and enforce your laws. Everything starts with the constitution. It is the hub to everything. And everything else is a spoke. The Moors don't know nothing about this, but we're gonna learn as we continue moving forward. So understand, the year 2025 is gonna be a push-pull type of year. And don't be surprised as we start to go through the varying stages of decolonization, right? Because we're going through various stages of advancement. Advancement of what? Decolonization. We're trying to emerge as a sovereign and independent state. I'm letting you in on a little secret. There's not so much a secret, because you're gonna find out soon. I'm already predicting that the year 2025 and going into 2026 is gonna be the year of people announcing their retirements. A whole lot of these so-called leaders who've been overseeing our communities, all of a sudden, they're gonna be tired and wanna go take a nap. They're gonna be announcing their retirements. Watch what I tell you. So when you hear them announcing in the year 2025 that they're retiring, just put a check mark right next to their name saying, "Ops." And the next person that retire, put a check mark next to their name. Ops. Watch and see. Because they know His Majesty the Sultan is back on the scene now. His Majesty the Sultan cares around what? A sword. His Majesty the Sultan has a very powerful pen. And His Majesty the Sultan has subject matter jurisdiction over all Moorish subjects. And Moorish subjects who've been running around acting like the Stephen Candies of the world gonna have to deal with His Majesty the Sultan. Because you're gonna see a whole lot of people announcing their retirements very soon. Because they know the game is over. Let's continue. Now, like I was saying, we talked about application. How do the Moors start to go through the application to be recognized as Moroccans again? Well, all Moors must understand, every last one of you are Moor subjects if you are still colonized. What does that mean? You still got who? Your adopted mother's name. You still got the last name of your adopted parents. So you're still American, that means you're still colonized. You're still a Moor subject. If you're still a naturalized American, then you're still a Moor subject. If you're a naturalized Canadian, then you are a Moor subject. If you're a naturalized British person, you are a Moor subject. Everywhere you've been naturalized, all throughout the Empire Morocco, you, according to treaties, are a Moorish subject. That's the proper name in the treaties. So we're not helping American Moors to come home and pledge their allegiance. Who are we helping straight across the board of the Empire Morocco? What is the proper name in the treaty that recognizes your political status? It is Moor subject. So you've been naturalized American, we're just gonna recognize you as Moor subject. If you've been naturalized by Canada, we're just gonna recognize you what? Moor subject. That's it. We could care less what your adopted mother named you. We know your proper name in the contract. That when we start to fight the good fight of decolonization, when we start to help you, we say, well, we're helping. So the Empire Morocco's trying to help Moors to come home, what do we have to list you down as in our legal argument? That you're a Moor subject. It puts you back at your proper status of the halfway house. We're not gonna say, yeah, we're helping Canadian Moors. No, because we were trying to get rid of the word "Canadian." Or we're helping American Moors. No, we're trying to get rid of the word "American." Or we're trying to help British Moors. No, we're trying to get rid of the word "British." We're just gonna call you Moor subject. That's the proper name in the contract. That when we enforce the contract, the parties must be known. So when we start to help you to come home, we'll list you under proper treaty name because treaties supreme all the land. Therefore, the language in the treaty is also supreme. So when you use supreme language to identify the party, which is you, that's been naturalized, we call you Moor subject. This must be understood. So if you start to take the journey as a Moor subject, and now you want to do what? You want to return to, right? You want to return to Morocco and pledge your allegiance to the Empire Morocco by application, you'll do what? You'll start working with, as you got the arrow, right? You're working. You'll do what? You'll start working with, as you got the arrow, right, and you're working. Because you notice I got the arrow going this direction. You know it's going this direction? You know why? Because you gotta return. You gotta go backwards. You gotta take two, what, two steps backwards to reset. You ever heard the terminology or the phrase? You have to add by subtraction. You gotta go backwards in order to go forwards. That's what's happening. You gotta return. You gotta return back to the future. So you gotta return home, then you get back into your proper status. So as you return to pledge your allegiance to what? Empire Morocco, the state, your mother. You're not pledging allegiance to the Moor's government, you're pledging allegiance to your mother. The WRC Trustee Ship Council will help you with the due process to come home. You know this Dorothy in the movie of The Wizard of Oz, she needed a little help. And everybody was giving her misinformation and disinformation. What is disinformation? Propaganda, willful lies, fraud. So in the movie, they told Dorothy, stay on the yellow brick road, which she kept biding herself off of it in search of how to get home. She gets to the end of the movie, and the whole time she had the answer to the test, the whole time throughout the movie, she already had on the shoes. But she needed someone to tell her what? The proper instructions to tell her the substantive law and procedure on how to enforce said law. She learned what? The rule of law. And she had to check the boxes. So what did the witch tell her? Oh, Dorothy, all you had to do is click your heel three times and say there's no place like home. Oh, wasn't that just so easy? Then why the hell didn't the good witch tell Dorothy at the beginning of the movie? If it was so easy? Oh, when you go back and watch The Wizard of Oz, you'll find out there were several witches. What happened? The so-called good witch used Dorothy to take out her competition. The so-called good witch told Dorothy, Dorothy landed on one witch and got the witch's shoes. Then the so-called good witch tells her, yeah, you need to go see the Oz. Then all of a sudden she go see the Oz, Oz tell her, you need to go kill the other witch. So everybody using Dorothy. So the good witch, and in the movie tells her, now that your work is done here, because now the Oz has been exposed and all the witches are dead, the good witch had no more competition. Now the good witch tells her, click your heel three times, you can go home. Well, wasn't that the first question that Dorothy said at the beginning of the movie? I just wanna go home. Why didn't the good witches tell her, them shoes you got on your feet, just click them? Why didn't any witch? Yeah, remember, there were several witches at the beginning of the movie. How many witches was in the movie? Four. And then there was the wizard. So you gotta understand, not everybody wants to tell you how to get home. But sometimes they get to a point where they have no choice but to tell you, because everything gets exposed. Once Dorothy exposed the wizard and Dorothy took out all the witches, the good witch finally said, you know what? I'm just telling you how to get home now. And then she went home. So what's happening? Now the Empire Morocco is trying to tell Moors how to come home, because your proper mother is telling you now, it's the Empire Morocco and its government. Because the game is over, because the curtain's been pulled back on the colonists. And the colonists can't use anybody to put us off the yellow brick road no more. Their black associations ain't working no more. That Black History Month is gonna get flushed down the toilet like a turd. It's over. The HBCUs can't, they can't help the colonists no more. Them presidents taking them big checks to pay off, because they got a nice cushy job. They ain't gonna tell these black people they're Moroccans, uh-uh. Because you know they got their PhD and doctorates, you know? They got a Mercedes Benz, a million dollar house. They ain't saying nothing. They good. Nah, the game's over. Pandora's out the box. So as we go into 2025, I'm taking my time in the month of January 2025 to set the proper tone. We shall decolonize. So which means what? It's time for the copper-colored people to come home. You gotta follow the instructions as a Moor subject and start to return to Morocco, the Empire Morocco. You ain't gotta leave nowhere. This is how you return to the Empire Morocco. Let me show you how you do it. I just did it. But you gotta do it with what? A pen. It's paper. It was nothing but a pen, some blank paper, and a printer. It was a pen, blank paper, and some printer ink. It's all we ever needed to come home. You didn't have to get on no boat or no plane to come home. All you needed what? A pen to sign your application to do what? Two things. First of all, you're gonna do what? You're gonna renounce the jurisdiction of your foster mother. Tell her, look, I appreciate you adopting me, but I'm going home now. Second thing you do is what? Pledge your allegiance to your biological mother, which is the Empire Morocco. And you did all that with a pen, some blank paper, and some ink of a printer. It's all it took. It's embarrassing that we didn't know that. It's embarrassing. We oughta be ashamed of ourselves as a people that we didn't, at the very least, study how Africa was getting their independence. We didn't, at the very least, study what Cuba did to get their independence. And the Moorish Americans are so stuck on stupid, they not even study what Puerto Rico is doing in the year 2025 to get their independence. Because Puerto Rico right now is decolonizing. They're checking international law boxes. And they ain't talking about no Circle Seven Quran either. They talking about nothing but the rule of law. What type of law? Public law and not private law. So if the Moor starts to come home, you return to Morocco, pledge your allegiance with a pen, some paper, and some ink from the cartridge. When we print it off, you'll sign it, and poof, just like that, you'll be Moroccan. You'll be back home just like Dorothy. She opened her eyes, and she was right back in the middle street of Kansas. So did she leave? It's called an abstract. When Dorothy got swept up, she got swept up where? In the middle of the street. When she returned back, she, right back where she started, in the middle of the street. Watch this. I just got back from Oz. Just like that, with a pen, Dorothy follows the instructions of substantive law and procedural law. But who had to help her? A mother, a woman. A woman helped Dorothy. Who's your mother? That's the question. If you think the United States of America is your mother, I got no problem with that, but just understand, she's your stepmother, she's your foster mother. That's the truth. She naturalized you. Go read the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. You were naturalized. Naturalized means what? Adopted. If you wanna come home, that's fine too. Fill out an application, pledge your allegiance, and renounce your foster mother. I'm being redundant for a reason here. Okay, what else I got up here? I have internal Moor states. Okay, so as you start to take your journey, right, you're returning, the WRC Trustee Ship Council, keeping in mind, knowledge is free at the WRC. We don't charge a penny. We don't charge no currency. We don't charge no dollars. Since they say dollars is gold and silver coin, we don't ask you for that either. There's no donation, there's no PayPal button. It's nothing. All we want is what? For you to return home with family. So what should be the mission and vision that all of us as copper-colored people should understand? It's about decolonization. Can't we all come under that one umbrella word? Regardless of what you call yourself, don't you want to decolonize? If the answer is yes, then knowledge is free at the WRC on how to do that. Listen. So once you go through the Trustee Ship Council, the Trustee Ship Council will do one of two things. The Trustee Ship Council will help you with placement, placement in an internal Moor state. Let's say it's like Ampac, right? Ampac is an internal state. You might be placed as a Moroccan directly with the state of Ampac as an acronym. That's one option. You become what? One of our residents. You'll become an officer of Ampac. Or we'll help you do what? Establish your own internal constitution. Listen, you establish your own internal constitution, we'll help you with that. Keep in mind, all constitutions will be the same. Every internal constitution of the Empire Morocco will have nearly identical verbiage. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the verbiage in your internal constitution will be the same language that Ampac has. And Ampac's language is the same language of all other internal states. So you don't have to worry about drafting a constitution or writing a constitution. The constitution's already been written for you. So whether you're in Alabama, Wyoming, California, Ontario, Canada, no matter where you go, as long as you're in Empire Morocco, and you wanna establish an internal state, we have a constitution already ready for you. All you need to do is establish what? A flag and a seal that represent what? Your internal state. That's all you have to do. Taking my time for a reason, because we getting ready to launch off in the year 2025, and we're not going to look backwards. Listen, so in class 158, and now we're in class 159, it was about what? UN Resolution 1514 that was signed by the United Nations member states on December 14, 1960, for the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples. So Moor subjects will be able to utilize the powers of Resolution 1514, because Moor subjects now can fill out an application and petition what? The state government, because the state government can provide you protections in order to enforce Resolution 1514 for who? Peoples. So the country is already set up. Let's go to it. Let's go to it. Resolution 1514. Taking my time. Resolution 1514, Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples. So what do we have to set up first? The country. What is the country? Empire Morocco. So we've set that up through the Constitution, which is fundamental law. Now the Constitution of the Empire Morocco is enforcing what? International law. Which gives all Moor subjects a right to come and pledge their allegiance to the country. So you were listed Moor subjects of who? Who are the Moor subjects? Peoples. Because Moroccans are the nationals. But the Moroccan government also wants to help who? Moorish subjects who are still naturalized, because those are our peoples too. So now, the country will help Moroccans, and the country will help Moor subjects. What do we have to set up first? The state. In order to become signatory powers or contracting parties to international law, which is the Charter of the United Nations and all of its resolutions. Then we can enforce treaty law of the state, such as the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, is what? A treaty. But how can you enforce the Treaty of Madrid of 1880 if the state, it wasn't a party to the Treaty of Madrid? The Treaty of Madrid of 1880, what you call a moot treaty. What does moot mean? It was just basically set aside. We couldn't enforce it. It's Moors. Because our mother was in the shallow grave. Only she could do it. We're gonna talk about shallow grave today, just to let the Moors know. We're gonna talk about Vladimir Putin. And what he's been trying to tell the world about the Moors. So in class 158, we read over Resolution 1514 of the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and People. It's the most powerful resolution ever written on behalf of colonized people. It is undefeated. Do you know how powerful that makes the Moors? First of all, our Moor's treaties cannot be defeated. The office of the Sultan cannot be defeated. The Empire Morocco's a name cannot be defeated. So now, we can weaponize Resolution 15, because it's customary international law that we can use to our advantage as well. We're just surrounding the colonists with law. They're absolutely surrounded with the rule of law. This must be understood. Listen. Speaking of Resolution 1514. Okay, this is Wikipedia. It says, the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples. Let's get a basic understanding. Who didn't vote for Resolution 1514 at the United Nations? Who did not in the year 1960? Okay, from the top, Brother Dre. Okay, from the top, Brother Dre.
The Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples, also known as the United Nations General Assembly, Resolution 1514, was a resolution of the United Nations General Assembly during its fifteenth session that affirmed independence for countries and peoples under colonial rule. The declaration characterized foreign rule as a violation of human rights, affirmed the right to self-termination, and called for an end to colonial rule. Autumn Getu- uh, Getchu writes, "Within fifteen years, anti-colonial nationalists had successfully captured the UN and transformed the General Assembly into a platform for the international politics of decolonization." According to Christian Ruth Smith, "The resolution produced a tectonic shift in international legitimacy as it successfully undermined the institution of empire." "It was adopted by the UN General Assembly on December 14th, 1960. Eighty-nine countries voted in favor, none voted against, and nine abstained: Australia, Belgium, Dominican uh, Dominican Republic, France, Portugal, Spain, Union of South Africa, United Kingdom, and the United States."
Alright. So, who? Okay, let's take it from here. Resolution 1514 of 1960. Says what? It was adopted by the UN General Assembly on December 14th, 1960. Eighty-nine countries voted in favor. None voted against. There was zero noes. And nine abstained. What does abstaining mean? Meaning the United States of America was there during the assembly, but they chose not to vote. They just sat in their chairs. They didn't vote yes. And they did not vote no. They abstained. They stayed, they remained what? Neutral. So if the United States is against decolonization, don't you think that was their perfect opportunity to let the whole world know? That they absolutely reject the rule of law regarding decolonization? Wasn't that their moment to say, no? But instead, they remained silent on the question, and they remained silent when the law was being adopted. Listen. It was adopted by the UN General Assembly on December 14th, 1960. Eighty-nine countries voted in favor, yes. None voted against. There was zero noes. And nine abstained. So now they disclose to you the nine that abstained. Why they disclose the ones that said no? Because there was there wasn't any no vote. But they gonna show you who abstained. Okay, here we go. Au- Australia, Belgium, Dominican Republic, France, Portugal, Spain, Union of South Africa, United Kingdom, which is Great Britain, and the United States. All of these are what? Colonial countries that are colonizing who? Moors. Now, whose name don't you see up there? You don't see Russia? So if Russia was not a part of the nine that abstained, and they say that nobody said no, that means Russia said what? Yes. This is 1960. But let's go back to the origin. Was it Russia in 1960? No. It was what? The USSR. And the USSR was a combination of fifteen states. We'll talk about that. I'm building up. So in 1960, it was the USSR. Russia was a part of a combination of sixteen or should I say fifteen states. Guess who else's name is not up there? Germany, Italy. See, so several European states voted in favor of decolonization. But I'm putting a pin, a spotlight on Russia. But keep in mind, there were other European states who voted in favor of decolonization. I'd be remiss if I didn't make special note of that. So when you do your research, you'll find out. Take the time to figure out which European states actually voted. Yes, that's your homework. Listen. So in 1960, it was the USSR. Alright, keep- keep that in mind as we continue to move forward in class. Listen. What do I have up here? Keep in mind, what's the subject matter? Decolonization. Resolution 1514 of 1960. So listen, what do I have up here on the board as I start to move to talk about Russia? I gotta build up a little bit. Watch. What I have here? Okay, it says mark time, January 16th, 2025. That is today's date that I'm recording this class. It's very important that I say that today. As I record this class, it's January 16th, 2025. Four days from now, the United States will have a public inauguration to bring in their new president and administration under Donald J. Trump on January 20th. So I have to say this today on January 16th, 2025. Listen. The United Kingdom agreed to complete decolonization for the country of the Mauritius and its Charles Archipelago people. So in the year 2024, the United Kingdom agreed to allow the Mauritius country, because it's a bunch of islands, allow them to have complete decolonization. They did this in 2024. The agreement was put together for the Mauritius island to get their other island, the one island that the United States has an air force base on. And the UK was holding on to that island, claiming it under sovereignty of Great Britain. But Great Britain had removed this island from the cluster of islands of Mauritius, because Mauritius is just a bunch of islands. But the UK decided to keep one of the islands and allow the United States to build an air force based on it. Then the United States turned around and signed a long-term lease agreement with Great Britain to pay Great Brit- Britain money to stay on that island. And the government of Mauritius, the country that had already been colonized, turned around and said, listen, we want our island back, one of those islands called Charles Archipelago. And guess what? Mauritius took the United Kingdom to the International Court of Justice in the year 2019 along with the General Assembly members of the United Nations. And they asked questions to the ICJ and said, can the UK actually separate this Charles Island from the country of Mauritius? And the ICJ said what? No. Well, how did the- how was the ICJ am- able to derive their decision? Okay, you go to Resolution 1514. What does Resolution 1514 say regarding what? Well, first of all, first of all, in the preamble, uh, Brother Dre, can you read this right here?
Recognizing that the peoples of the world ardently desire the end of colonialism in all its manifestations.
So, the UK holding on to that island was a manifestation of colonialism because the United Kingdom tried to separate that one island from the other cluster of islands. But all those islands, one hundred percent of them belonged to the Mauritius government, the country. So Mauritius government said, look, we want that one island back. UK said, no. They said, we're not gonna argue with you. We're gonna take you what? I'll see you in court. So they went to the ICJ. ICJ said, in their advisory opinion, that yes, according to what? The rule of law. What law rules? Let's take it simple. The rule of law. What law rules? Well, it's basically a subject matter. Tell me the subject matter, then I'll tell you the subject matter juris diction. What does juris diction mean? When you hear the word jurisdiction, that's a word of law. What does juris mean? It's a compound word. Juris diction. What does diction mean? Words of a dictionary. Words. What does juris mean? The court. The court has juris. They are jurists. The judges are jurors. So the judges have the obligation to look at the interpretation of the word. And the word is what? Law. And the question, which word rules? So when you're talking international law, they say, okay, well, what do we use as a subject matter jurisdiction for the judges to rule for or against the Mauritius government? So Mauritius government said, yeah, we gonna use this Resolution 1514 because, you know, that is the rule of law. Because the Mauritius government knew that the law that rules was Resolution 1514 and its what? Its provisions, its terms and conditions. So when you go in front of the judge, the judge has what? Subject matter jurisdiction. So the jurist, which is the judge, is looking at the diction, which is words. The words are what? Law. So they told the UK, I hate to tell you, but under the rule of law, the law that rules is international law under the subject matter of decolonization. And when it comes to decolonization, indigenous people have a right to do what? Watch this. Put an end of colonialism in all its manifestations. Now watch this. Now you come down to what? Now you go to the arguments. You gotta teach the Moors this because I'm gonna tell you in just a moment why this is important to us. Okay. Let's read Article 4, Brother Dre.
Article 4. "All armed action or repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease in order to enable them to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence, and the integrity of their national territories shall be respected."
Like I told you, the United States hates this word, complete. So they say, oh, Mauritius. Mauritius had complete independence. They said, no, they didn't. Going back. So UK had to give up complete independence and not impart. Listen. So, mark time, January 16th, 2025. But in the year 2024, UK agreed to complete decolonization for the country of Mauritius and its Charles Archipelago people and island. So now Mauritius has a hundred percent of their islands instead of ninety-nine percent. So why do I have these images up here? I'm getting ready to give a public service announcement. You have to give credit. Well, credit is due. I wanna say thank you very much to who? The United Kingdom and the United States, more specifically to their leaders, which right now is who? Who's the prime minister? Who became prime minister in 2024? This gentleman by the name of Keir. Oh, okay, Keir Starling. He's United Kingdom Prime Minister. And in the year 2024, who was the President of the United States? Joe Biden. So both the United Kingdom's Prime Minister and the United States' President both got together because the United States had the air force base on the Charles Island. And Great Britain was claiming the Charles Island under sovereignty of the Great Britain. So the United States said, you know what? Uh, UK, who? We're gonna say we'll be an advocate. Would support the fact that the ICJ ruled to say you gotta give that island back under what? International law. That's the rule of law. So I wanna give credit to Joe Biden and his administration for being an advocate to support the United Kingdom and giving back the island. So what did the United States turn around and do? They- they were prepared, or should I say are prepared to sign a ninety-nine-year lease agreement with the Mauritius government to keep that air force base on the Charles Island. However, the people have a right to return to said island. The people have the right to come back because the island now belongs to Mauritius. So what you have to understand is this. Joe Biden agreed that Great Britain will remove its purported sovereignty over that island. Now it's no longer Great Britain's island based on what? The intent to give it back. So the UK has already agreed, the United States has already agreed, and they agreed in 2024. But why am I talking about this on January 16th, 2025? Two reasons. One, to give credit, well, credit is due, that the colonists are what? Decolonizing because they're following what? The rule of law. That's a good thing. But what's the flip side? Now, this talk that Donald Trump is getting ready to take his office and try to use what? Cohesion to break up the agreement, to put pressure on the United Kingdom not to sign the agreement that would relinquish Great Britain's colonialism over the Charles Island. This is what they're saying now, that Donald Trump wants to have something to say. So first, I wanted to give credit to Joe Biden because he deserves it. And the United States as a federal corporation deserves it. And the United States of America as what? The actual country name deserves some credit on January 16th, 2025. But any day after January 20th, 2025, we're gonna find out. And we're gonna keep an eye on what the United States of America tries to do to do what? Use coercion against the United Kingdom. Now let me explain something to people, in case you didn't know. Did you know the United Kingdom, i.e. Great Britain, had abolished slavery in 1833? Sister Nova, read this one.
The full ob- ob- um, abolishing of slavery in Great Britain was achieved through the Slavery Abolition Act of 1833, which made the ownership of enslaved people illegal throughout the British Empire. However, this law was not immediate. It stipulated that those who were enslaved would be freed in stages.
So that's called what? Varying stages of advancement. Great Britain started relinquishing their colonized status over Moors. Eighteen thirty-three. We're going way back now. So what should that tell you about the proper concept and context of Great Britain? They've always been trying to get rid of slavery. Now that they maintain naturalization over Moors? Yes. They adopted the Moors and turned the Moors into British subjects. So they ended slavery and just adopted the Moors. Under what's commonly known as the Fourteenth Amendment type of clauses. But what's my point here? Great Britain has always been trying to find a way to find some mutual benefit in working with Moors some way, somehow. Listen. So now, who is this island up on the street? Oh, these are Charles people. For the Mauritius government. Now these are people of this particular island, listen to me very closely. It's, it's a cluster of islands, so on this particular island of Charles Archipelago, they look like this. That's the dominant, look. Who are they? Moors. So Great Britain was relinquishing jurisdiction from over the Mauritius country and island and letting these people come back to the island. And guess who was, who was assisting with that? Let's go back to it again. Gotta give credit, what credit is due? Joe Biden and, and the Prime Minister of the UK. Now this talks that Donald Trump wants to have a say. What's going on with Donald Trump? Okay. I, I want this visual there, as I talk about this. The United States is one of the last imperial powers that's very concerned that the other European states have been decolonizing and breaking up what? Their monopolies. So now that the United Kingdom is allowing the Mauritius government to have complete decolonization independence, keeping in mind, the United States is still getting ready to sign a ninety nine year lease contract to stay on the island. So why does Donald Trump need to have a say with the UK if the United States still ended up with a win-win deal, cuz they still got to use the island for ninety nine years? Keeping in mind, they're paying a lease, so they're gonna pay billions of dollars to the Mauritius government to lease that land. So the United States is still getting what they want. So why are they so interested in talking to the United Kingdom's Prime Minister and government to stop them from relinquishing sovereignty over the island? If in fact, the United States is still sitting there legally to hold the land as a tenant? Because the United States already paying UK, so they're gonna pay somebody. The United States already agreed, Joe Biden said, well, we just paid the Mauritius government, so they're not losing nothing. So why does Donald Trump need to have an opinion? I'll tell you why. Because the United States knows that the empire of Morocco is rising up right now. The United States knows that international law has become what? The rule of law. What law rules? It's international law, and the United Kingdom is following what? The rule of law, international law, they're abiding by the law. And the member states of the United Nations is supporting decolonization. And in the case of Mauritius and the United Kingdom and the ICJ in twenty nineteen, the ICJ gave a ruling on advisory opinion that the rule of law shall stand, has standing in law. So four years later, from the year twenty nineteen to the year twenty twenty four, we're talking about four, five years, UK did what? In good faith, they adhere to the ICJ's advisory opinion. So now Donald Trump wants to come and say, ah, 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 we need to talk to you, UK. Well, why does Trump need to talk to the UK? Because the United States knows that what the UK is doing is doing what? Is undermining imperialism. The United States needs allies that are willing to say no to decolonization. The United States is gonna find themselves by themselves trying to maintain colonialism. And they need the UK to be a cold conspirator. They need an accomplice. And the UK is saying, nah, man, we, we're done with all that, bro. It's time for us to share with the world. The world is moving forward. Decolonization is a real deal. They said, decolonization shall come to an end. That's what the law says. So now France is leaving Africa, and all the other European states have basically already left Africa. The European states, for the most part, have left the islands, don't get me wrong, they got contracts with these islanders. They got a lot of sellout prime ministers and presidents still overseeing these islands. That's neo-colonialism. But who do you blame in a neo-colonialism, colonialism contract? You gotta blame the head of state of that island. Who's maintaining a contract that keeps them subjugated. Getting back to point. The United States knows they're gonna be the last colonial power on planet Earth still trying to oppress and suppress the Moors. And they don't have any more allies. They needed the European Union and they needed NATO to support the United States in their imperialism, hegemony, and bigotry mentality that they think they can maintain, use of force or coercion. So Donald Trump's job is coming in to coerce the UK to maintain what? Colonialism over the Charles Island, because the UK gives up that island, guess what that created? A new custom and usage. It supports the rule of law, because it's called what? A causal relationship. You ever heard of causal relationship? That's a legal term. What's causal relationship? Well, the latest term is what? Cause and effect. So when the UK gives up the Charles Island, the United States is like, man, you, you're supporting the Moors. You're showing that the ICJ was correct in their ruling. You're gonna end up isolating us as being the United States, then now UK is out, they ain't colonizing. France is starting to be out, they're not colonizing. Denmark stopped, Italy stopped, Germany stopped. Spain and Portugal stopped doing it. Guess who never did it? Russia. Russia never colonized any of the people. So the United States is getting ready to find themselves, find themselves to deal with the empire of Morocco and his master Sultan and the Moors government. And the United States needs its allies through the European Union to say, you know what? We're gonna support the United States in their continued subjugation oppression of the Moors. See, the United States knows the European Union not gonna support it. Now don't get me wrong, Great Britain is not a part of the European Union no more. But now Great Britain, who stand alone by themselves as a, as a European country, cuz they're not a part of the European Union no more, so they kind of sort by themselves. The United States is like, yo, man, we, we gotta stick together. And UK is like, man, we've been getting rid of slavery since eighteen thirty three, you didn't get the memo? Yes, we turn around and we naturalize the Moors, but naturalization is a manifestation of what? Colonialism. So now the UK has said, we're gonna maintain the rule of law, cuz what law rules? International law. So now the United States has an issue all of a sudden with international law. Why? Because they know they're gonna lose the land to who? The empire Morocco. As the empire Morocco starts to rise up, to emerge as what? A sovereign and what? Independent state, not just sovereign, cuz the United States wanted the Moors to be underneath the United States. The United States of America wanted to keep the sovereign and independent state status as a country and put the Moors underneath them on an integrated status, and it ain't working no more. So you know Donald Trump thinks he's the master negotiator, so he gonna go try to coerce the UK to course correct. It ain't gonna work. Cuz the UK knows that Donald Trump only gonna be there for four years and as of January twenty first of twenty twenty nine, Donald Trump will no longer be the President of the United States. And the UK is looking at long-term advantages, not no short-term, short-term sociopath type of projects. They looking at long-term. They know they gotta start to do what? Share the jurisdiction with the empire of Morocco. Listen. As I keep talking about resolution fifteen fourteen and decolonization, it's important to know how Russia has played a part of decolonization. I have to talk about this. Because as the Moors start to decolonize, I want you to listen to how increasingly the United States gonna keep talking about Russia and China being the bad guy. It's propaganda. Why? Cuz the United States don't wanna tell their citizens the truth that Russia and China are supporting who? Indigenous people that's trying to do what? Decolonize. Listen, what do I have up here on the board? This is Russia in the green. Listen. I know it's a terrible image, but look at this. This is Vladimir Putin holding a so-called image of Jesus, he said, Jesus is what? Black. I'm gonna make sense of this in just a moment, listen. What happened on December thirty first nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety one? Uh, Brother Dre?
Collapse of the Soviet Union, sequence of events that led to the dissolution of the USSR on December thirty first nineteen ninety one. The reforms implemented by President Mikhail Gorbachev and the backlash against him hastened the demise of the Soviet state.
All right, so let me read it again. On December thirty first nineteen ninety one, it was the collapse of the Soviet Union. Sequence of events that led to the dissolution of the USSR on December thirty first nineteen ninety one. The reforms implemented by President Mika, Mika I, I would probably pronounce that. Mika hell, Mika I, Gorbachev. Mika I, Gorbachev. From the top, the reforms implemented by President Mika I, Gorbachev. And the backlash against them hastened the demise of the Soviet state. So the dissolution of the USSR, what happened? Russia couldn't hold on to its monopoly of European states. So in nineteen ninety one, listen, so all gonna make sense, I'm gonna bring it together and show you what resolution fifteen fourteen is all about. Russia used to hold on to the monopoly of these territories called Estonia, right? Libya, Lithuania, Belarus, Ukraine, Maldives, Jordan, Afghanistan, Armenia, Kazakhstan, Uzbekistan, Kazakhstan, and Chagakistan. If you count that up, that's approximately, including Russia, fifteen states. Russia was holding on to approximately fourteen of the territories. So like what? Estonia is a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, Armenia, ten, Turkmenistan, eleven, Uzbekistan, twelve, Kazakhstan, thirteen, Kyrgyzstan, fourteen, Tajikistan, and Russia made fifteen. So after nineteen ninety one, was basically the end of the Cold War. Remember, the Cold War started what? Nineteen forty seven, after World War Two. The Cold War started nineteen forty seven and basically ended nineteen eighty nine. And the USSR agreed to give up fourteen of its territories in the name of what? Self-determination and human rights and democracy. Which is a good thing for people who seeking independence. That's a beautiful thing. So guess what happened next? Putin comes to the office, year twenty twelve. Putin says, oh, USSR got broken up? His monopoly got broken up based on what? The Charter of the United Nations that helped people to self, have self-determination and human rights and the right to self-govern? You know, Putin said, yeah, it's time to break up your colonial monopolies. So Vladimir Putin has been supporting indigenous people all around planet Earth because in NATO, the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, which includes the United States, Canada, UK, Germany, et cetera, they helped to break up the USSR. Remember now NATO was established when? Nineteen forty eight. So the Cold War started nineteen forty seven. They created NATO in nineteen forty eight, put together a military alliance. So by the time Putin took his office in twenty twelve, he's like, oh, so y'all used the Charter to help break up USSR. So Putin says, guess what? I'm using the same Charter to help break up all your colonial territories you're holding on to. You must understand why they don't like Vladimir Putin. One of the reasons I should say, let me be specific. One of the reason why they don't like him is because Vladimir Putin and the state called Russia, along with its Minister of Foreign Affairs, has been telling NATO that we're going to assist these Moors who are starting to emerge as a sovereign and independent state. Listen. You see Vladimir Putin holding a picture of Jesus? What does that symbolize? Most people say, oh, Jesus did what? Jesus rose from the dead. He was in a shallow grave, I guess, he just, he just came up out of that cave. So why is he showing a picture of Jesus? It's because Jesus in these anthropomorphic, anthropomorphic stories, allegory stories, is about someone emerging and rising. Who's rising right now? The empire Morocco and Vladimir Putin and his Minister of Foreign Affairs keeps reminding NATO that he's gonna support the Moors. Listen. What do I have up here? The United Nations General Assembly Resolution fifteen forty one. It came out when? The fifteenth of December nineteen sixty, so when it come out? December fifteenth nineteen sixty. When did resolution fifteen fourteen come out? December fourteenth nineteen sixty. So the next following day, they come out with another resolution for what? Decolonization. And you go down to principle number six, listen to me. I'm gonna tell you what Vladimir Putin is trying to tell the world and he's trying to tell NATO. Okay, Nova, read our principle six.
Principle six, a non-self-governing territory can be said to have reached a full measure of self-government by A, emergence as a sovereign independent state, B, free association with an independent state, or C, integration with an independent state.
All right, so what's happening? So on the principle six of resolution fifteen forty one of December fifteenth nineteen sixty, it talks about colonized people have three options to choose from. Colonized people can choose what? A, emergence as a sovereign independent state. Well, why is that option one? Because of resolution fifteen fourteen of December fourteenth nineteen sixty says- of December 14th, 1960, says what? It's all about the Declaration or the Granting Independence to who? Colonial countries and people was about independence. It was not about dependence. So Section 8 gave all the rights indigenous people, says emergence as a sovereign and independent state. That's why it's Section 8. So Vladimir Putin comes out and says, "Let me show y'all a picture of Jesus, cuz Jesus did what? Rose from the dead." The Empire Morocco's been in a shallow grave. So Putin is letting NATO know, "I'm gonna support the Moors, the same way I've been supporting all colonized people for decades." So when he showed Jesus, Jesus about what? Emergence. You see? He's sending political signs and symbols to NATO. So now here comes Donald Trump. He gonna try to coerce UK to say, "Man, you know that Putin is telling all of us that we gotta decolonize because we broke up the USSR and told Putin..." Not necessarily Putin, we told the USSR in 19... what? What year did the USSR break up? 1991. So ever since then, Putin becomes president in 2012, and he really starts to go put into hyperdrive to help colonize people because Putin say, "If you're gonna break up my monopoly, then I'm gonna break up yours." And the UK right now is doing the honorable thing based on what? The rule of law. And we all know that, unfortunately, good brother Donald J. Trump does not always respect the rule of law. That doesn't mean he's not gonna attempt to negotiate, but I honestly believe his negotiation is gonna fail because let me tell you something. The United Kingdom and Joe Biden, they already agreed. So if something happens with the deal with the Mauritius government and Charles Island, it ain't got nothing to do with what China and Russia have done. Because they'll use China and Russia as a what? Scat goat to say, "Oh, it's about national security." No, it ain't. Because that's Mauritius' job to maintain their national security of their country. And the United States is already gonna be there for 99 years. So what is this really all about? They don't want the UK to continue to enforce the rule of law regarding Resolution 1514 because they know the Empire Morocco's gonna use the same law and the same case law staring sights. He said precedent of the ICJ's ruling of the year 2019 in dealing with the Mauritius government. And the UK adhered to the ruling as well as UK adhered to what? The law. So the combination of the law and the combination of ICJ ruling on behalf of the law cuz it's jurisdiction. Jurisdiction means you're jurist. Let's take a look at what? The words. Listen. What do I have up here on the screen? Oh, this is the Act of Al-Saris, 1906. Who was a party to it? Okay. Let's scroll on down cuz I want all the citizens of the United States of America to understand one thing is who was there as signatory powers? Okay, first of all, let me show you something real quick. You know who was there? As a signatory powers to the Act of Al-Saris, which is a Empire Morocco treaty for His Majesty the Sultan and the Moors government. But I'm gonna show you who was one of the twelve signatory powers. Who was one? Brother Dre?
His Majesty, the Emperor of all the Russias.
1906, but was there just a Russia back then? No, the USSR. Then now they're writing it down as His Majesty, the Emperor of what? All. See that word? All? The Russias. What's all the Russias? USSR. At the time, it was fifteen territories, including Russia. Now it's just Russia all by themselves, and they gave up fourteen other territories. But in 1906, USSR, i.e. Russia, signed this treaty. So they know about the Act of Al-Saris in 1906, and what about the Act of Al-Saris in 1906? Keep it in mind, who else is a signatory power to the Act of Al-Saris? Okay, just a moment. Okay, here's the signature page. Who's the signature powers? So the signatory powers, signatory powers were who? Brother Dre?
Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, United States of America, France, Great Britain, Italy, Morocco, Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden.
See that? So Russia signed it. See that? All the Russias, which included all the other fourteen territories that got broken up in 1991. But when USSR signed this in 1906, it included fifteen territories. So Russia's saying to the United States of America, "Yeah, you signed this treaty too." And you know who's the sovereign and independent state that all the Europeans recognized as being the sovereign? It was the Empire Morocco, right? But first of all, what's the definition of empire? Nova?
Empire, a noun, one, an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority, formerly especially an emperor or empress.
Alright, so what is an empire? An empire is an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority. You see that? So all the signatory powers of the Act of Al-Saris of 1906 recognized the Empire Morocco, and they also recognized all the European states as being under one superior power, one authority called His Majesty the Sultan. And the Empire Morocco was the sovereign, independent country that allowed the European states to come under its protections. And in the treaty of 1906, Russia was a part of that. And Russia's saying now, "Well, you broke up our monopoly, now we gonna break up your monopoly." NATO. And oh, by the way, since y'all wanna remove me as president of Russia, then I might as well give everything back to the Moors. Vladimir Putin is playing a hell of a political chess game that the United States is not gonna tell their citizens this truth. They gonna keep putting spin on it. "Oh, Russia and China is so bad." No, Russia and China is sick of what? Colonialism. Now let me tell you something about who? China. Listen. China dealt with its last colonial scenario when Great Britain. Did you know Hong Kong was a colony within China? Great Britain relinquished its colonialism over Hong Kong in the year, wait for it, 1997. So China's been trying to get Great Britain out of the bosom of China for decades. And guess who finally agreed to relinquish complete decolonization? It was Great Britain gave China complete decolonization because it gave China's country back its own territory called Hong Kong. What year? 1997. So the United States is a little perturbed with the UK cuz UK keeps doing what? Giving back territories. The United States needs an ally, they need an accomplice to undermine the rule of law, and they can't find one now. So China's been trying to decolonize. And Russia, Russia's USSR was broke up. So they're putting this spin on it like Russia and China is so bad, but the reality is the United States just don't wanna tell the truth that Russia and China is helping who? Colonized people. So when you hear them fools up on Capitol Hill, the Senate and the House of Representatives of the United States, and they keep blaming Russia and China, and they doing all these fear tactics, trying to scare the American people, just remember what I just said. It ain't got nothing to do with fear and anger. It has everything to do with decolonization. Cuz the United States is upset with the UK cuz the UK is giving up all their territories. But yet it was the UK and NATO who forced Russia to give up their territories. You gotta see what's happening? Listen. What are we gonna read next? I'm still talking about decolonization. I'm still talking about Resolution 1514. I'm still talking about international law cuz international law oversees what? Treaties. Now I'm showing you the Act of Al-Saris of 1906, which is a treaty. So we gonna read the preamble. And I'm gonna show the citizens of the United States of America what the United States don't wanna tell you. Okay, just a moment. Okay, Nova, let's read the preamble of the Act of Al-Saris of 1906 that the United States don't want their citizens to know. I'm listening.
Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality, have resolved upon the invitation of His Seraphian Majesty to call together a conference at Al-Jasiris for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms, as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application, and have appointed as their delegates, plenty of potentaries, the following:
Pause. Okay, so what's happening? I'm talking to the citizens of the United States of America and all of the other European states who were or are signatory powers to this treaty. What's the preamble say? Okay, from the top. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order. So order being reined in, and the Europeans are agreeing to this order being reined in, but whose responsibility was it to rein in the order? It was the Empire Morocco, His Majesty the Sultan, and the Moors government, and this is what the United States agreed to in 1906. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco. But Morocco's an empire. Not the Kingdom of Morocco. There was no Kingdom of Morocco in 1906. It's always been the Empire Morocco. Let me prove that once again. Let me show you another treaty real quick. Standby. This is a treaty of peace and friendship of 1836, and you see who the party is? Emperor of Morocco, the Empire of Morocco. You say, "Well, that says emperor." Oh, timeout. Listen. Now you scroll on down. Look, watch this. Now I got this from the United States website, so this is their document. Watch what they wrote. Nova, can you read this from the top?
Morocco consulate of the United States of America for the Empire of Morocco.
The United States wrote that. So the Emperor of what? The Empire. Can you go ahead and read the rest of that?
To all whom it may concern, be it known. Whereas the undersigned James R. Lied, a citizen of the United States of North America, and now their resident consul at Tangier, having been duly appointed commissioner by letters patent under the signature of the President and seal of the United States of North America, bearing date at the city of Washington, the fourth day of July, AD of 1835, for negotiating and conducting and concluding a treaty of peace and friendship between the United States of North America and the Empire of Morocco. I therefore, James R. Lied, Commissioner, as afore said, do conclude the foregoing treaty and every article and clause therein contained, reserving the same nevertheless for the final ratification of the President of the United States of North America and by and with the advice and consent of the Senate. In testimony whereof, I have hair unto affix my signature and the seal of this consulate on the first day of October in the year of our Lord 1836, and of the independence of the states, the sixty-first. James R. Lied.
Uh huh. So who's the party that he's talking about? The Empire of Morocco. 1836 has always been the empire. Listen. What's the Constitution say? Empire of Morocco. Isn't that the name on the treaty? So in 1906, this is the treaty of Act of Al-Saris. Who's the party name? Empire Morocco. So who's reigning the order? When I say in Morocco, well, what about Morocco? The Empire, not the Kingdom. So the Sultan of what? The Empire. Listen. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in the Empire of Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by the means of introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle, listen, of the sovereignty and independence. See that? Of His Majesty the Sultan of the Empire Morocco, and the integrity of his domains and the economic liberty without any equality. So the Empire Morocco is what? Sovereign and what? And independent. Okay, let's go back to Resolution 1541. Resolution 1541 of 1960 talks about the emergence as a sovereign and independent state. See? Putin knows that. So when you see this image of Putin, he knows that the Empire Morocco is emerging as a sovereign and independent state, and he's letting NATO know the game is over. Putin is not necessarily for the Moors. Putin is just simply what? Against NATO. And what's the easiest way to deal with NATO? Assist Moors who are decolonizing the very territories that NATO exist. You have to understand what's happening right now. Let's go back to Act of Al-Saris. The Moors are emerging. Jesus emerged. Empire Morocco's emerging. I'm being redundant. Go back to Act of Al-Saris. Matter of fact, let's go back to the definition of empire again. See, Putin knows about the empire, and he knows all the European states come underneath the... See, Putin knows about the empire and he knows all the European states come underneath the Empire Morocco, His Majesty Sultan and the Moorish government, so Nova from the top, Empire.
Empire, an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority and emperor or empress.
So the empire has several states and countries, plural, in it. So all the signatory powers to the Act of Al-Saris agree they're in where? In Morocco, listen. Nova from the top, this is the International Court of Justice case of nineteen fifty two, from the top, Nova.
International Court of Justice, reports of judgments, advisory opinions and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus United States of America, judgment of August twenty seventh of nineteen fifty two.
So Vladimir Putin knows that all European states are where? In Morocco, including who? The United States of America is in Morocco. Russia is in Morocco. All the territories that Russia lost, which was fourteen territories, those territories are in Morocco. Everywhere NATO calls their primary residence is in Morocco. Putin knows it. He said, well, look, if I can't have it, you can't either. So now he comes out to the world in twenty twenty four and he said, look, Jesus is black. We're timeout. Jesus is black, huh? Okay, just a moment. Let's look up the definition of what a, of what they say a Moor is. Moor. Moor, oh, what's a Moor? What's a Moor? Oh, okay, what's a Moor? Oh, the Moors are who? The Moors are who? All the who? Let me show you, all the Moors are the who? The blacks. And who? The negroes. Who are the Moors? Who are the Moors? Moor, capital M, now. Moor is a short, short word for what? Moroccan. So Putin comes out and says Jesus is black, but what is he really saying to NATO? That the Moors, that the Moors, that you've been calling black and that you've been calling black and you've been calling negro are really the Moors. And Jesus ain't black. Jesus is a Moor. This is what Putin's telling NATO. This is a public service announcement to all the citizens of the United States of America. Please understand why the United States is not Putin, does not like Putin, I should say, because Putin is helping colonize people. So they're trying to make Putin look like he's the boogeyman. Then they don't like China, why not? Cause China's also helping who? Colonize people. Jesus ain't black. If you call him black, that's called what? Race. So now you gotta understand the three elements. What are three elements when they start to use the word race? Okay. The element of race is the third box. Soon as you raise the question of race, it falls automatically category of the third box. What's the second box? Ethnicity. What's the first box? Nationality. So it's nationality first, then people have us called what? Ethnicity. Last but not least is called race, these are three different classifications. So therefore, I'll give you an example. The Empire Morocco's nationality is what? Moroccan nationality. But the Empire Morocco's ethnicity is what? African. African is not a nationality unless you're from South Africa. Cause South Africa is the only state out of fifty five states they use the nationality of African. The other forty four states do not use the nationality of African, therefore it's an ethnicity. What's an ethnicity? A group of people who share something in common. So when they call you African, they only saying, they're looking at your complexion. Your primor facia makes you African under ethnicity. Then you talk race, what's race? Black. So then, uh, so the Empire Morocco and all countries on planet Earth recognize three different elements. The first element is nationality. Second element is ethnicity. Third element is race. So when Vladimir Putin came out and said Jesus was black, that's the third element. Then everybody said, yeah, uh, Jesus is from Africa. Okay, that's the second element of it, under ethnicity. But what is Jesus' real nationality? That's the real question, and since all the territories was the Moorish empire? Then Jesus is a Moor. But Moor is a short title for what? Moroccan. So when you see Vladimir Putin said Jesus is black, what is he trying to tell all the people in the world? He said, Jesus is what? A Moor. And this is why the United States don't like Putin, cause they know that he's trying to undermine all of their monopolies of colonized territories. Now, once you go back and listen to Vladimir Putin's Minister of Foreign Affairs, he's always antagonizing NATO members and telling them, you know that, uh, that whole complete decolonization is not finished. Instead of y'all worrying about us holding him ease, how about you worry about them colonies you still got, since you want to talk about the charter gave so many people so many rights? You gotta understand what's happening on the highest level. This is a high level conversation I'm having with you right now. They don't want this to be known to nobody on planet Earth. So they're gonna always make a scapegoat that is Russia and China, but always remember that Russia and China also trying to help colonize people. For different reasons, everybody has ulterior motives, don't get me wrong. But understand why all of a sudden Donald J. Trump wanted to get involved, he wanna maintain colonialism. Now, as we start to roll, close out, we're going to read a letter so I can finalize what I'm saying as to why the United States of America won't tell their citizens the truth. So let me allow your President of the United States tell you the truth. Okay, what do I have here? This is the Act of Al-Saris of nineteen oh six. And within this particular copy that I have. Let's listen to the President of the United States tell you what's up. Okay, Nova from the top.
By the President of the United States of America. A proclamation, whereas a general act and an additional protocol was concluded and signed on April seventh nineteen oh six by the plenipotentiaries of the United States of America, Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, France, Great Britain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Russia and Sweden. The originals of which act and, uh, of which general act and additional protocol being in the French language are word for word as follows.
Pause, continue.
And whereas the said general act and additional protocol were signed by the plenipotentiaries of the United States of America under reservation of the following declaration. Quote, "The government of the United States of America, having no political interest in Morocco and no desire or purpose having animated it to take part in this conference other than to secure for all peoples the widest equality of trade and privilege with Morocco and to facilitate the institution of reforms in that country tending to ensure complete cordiality of intercourse without the stability of administration within for the common good." Declares that in acquiescing in the regulations and declarations of the conference in becoming a signatory to the General Act of Al-Saris and to the additional protocol, subject to ratification according to constitutional procedure. And accepting the application of those regulations and declarations to American citizens and interests in Morocco. It does so without assuming obligation or responsibility for the enforcement thereof, end of quote. And whereas in giving its advice and consent to the ratification of the said general act and additional protocol, the Senate of the United States resolved, quote, "As a part of this act of ratification, that the Senate understands that the participation of the United States in the Al-Saris Conference and in the formulation and adoption of the general act and protocol which resulted therefrom was with the sole purpose of preserving and increasing its commerce in Morocco. The protection as to life, liberty and property of its citizens residing or traveling therein and of aiding by its friendly offices and efforts in removing friction and controversy which seemed to menace the peace between the powers signatory with the United States to the Treaty of eighteen eighty. All of which are on terms of amity which this government and without purpose to depart from the traditional American foreign policy which forbids participation by the United States in the settlement of political questions which are entirely European in their scope, end of quote. And whereas the said general act and additional protocol were duly ratified by the governments of the United States of America and of the other powers aforesaid. And by His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco. And whereas in pursuance of Article one twenty one of the said article, of, of the said general act, the ratifications of the said general act and additional protocol of all the signatory powers were deposited with the government of His Majesty, the King of Spain on December thirty first of nineteen oh six, thereby constituting a valid exchange of the ratifications thereof. Now, therefore, be it known that I, Theodore Roosevelt, President of the United States of America, have caused the said general act and additional protocol to be made public to the end that the same and every article and clause thereof may be observed and fulfilled with good faith by the United States and the citizens thereof. Subject to the reservation made in the aforesaid declaration of the plenipotentiaries of the United States and to the resolution of the Senate. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the United States of America to be hereunto affixed. Done at the city of Washington, this twenty second day of January in the year of our Lord, one thousand nine hundred and seven and of the independence of the United States of America, the one hundred and thirty first. Theodore Roosevelt, by the President Iluhu Root, Secretary of State."
All right. So you can clearly see that the President of the United States along with the House of Representatives and the Senate agreed to fulfill the obse- observation and full application of the Act of Al-Saris of nineteen oh six and its one hundred and twenty three articles. But let's go back to Article one and two momentarily to show you what the United States agreed to, listen. Nova from the top.
Chapter one, Declaration relative to the organization of the police. Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares that the following provision should be made.
So this Majesty the Sultan summoned, the conference summoned by His Majesty Sultan. Theodore Roosevelt, the United States of America was summoned along with the other European powers. Why? Because all the European powers are located where? In the Empire Morocco. And who is the sovereign authority of all the European states? The Empire Morocco and His Majesty Sultan and the Moorish government, listen. Article two.
Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Moxen from Moorish Mohammedans, commanded by Moorish Cades and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce.
So therefore, His Majesty the Sultan is now bringing the Moors together. The Moorish government. To do what? Reining the order. And the United States of America and the several European states agreed that the Sultan, not only is the Empire Morocco sovereign and independent, but the Sultan is head of state over all European states. And all the European states understood that the Moorish government was supposed to come together to help His Majesty Sultan and the Empire Morocco to rule the empire again in nineteen oh six. And what's the nationality of the Empire Morocco? Well, the word Morocco is your mother. And she named all her children Moroccans. Therefore, the office of Sultan is also Moroccan. Cause it's a mother, father, family. And her children, as she called Moorish, what is their nationality? Moroccan. Oh, I better prove that, so now, let's look at French. You see what French got it listed as? So right here, Moorish, Moorish, what is the Moorish nationality? Moroccan, Moroccan. So the Moors are Moroccan. Cause your mama is Moroccan. And your political father is Moroccan. So you have to understand. The United States of America right now is getting ready here from His Majesty the Sultan. His Majesty the Sultan, His Majesty the Sultan is about to do what? Summon. The conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares the following provision should be made. And from there, you got a hundred and twenty three articles. That puts the Moorish government and the Moorish Consular Court in charge of all the European states for any disputes they do to violate what? Number one, violate the treaties. And number two, to violate any Moroccan law. So you got treaty law, which is the Act of Al-Saris. And when the House members get together, listen, as I started to close out, as the House members come together. The House members of the legislative branch will enact what? Statutory law, which is legislative acts, which is what? Moroccan statutes. So between the treaty language and the Moroccan laws that we enact. It will have subject matter jurisdiction over all the European states and they already know that. So they've been slowly but surely giving these territories back. Especially the territories are willing not to call themselves what? Moroccan. So all the territories have been decolonizing and the people keep calling themselves every name but what? Moroccan. But now they know the Empire Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan. Who's the, who's, who's the Sultan? There he is, Abdul Smith Al-Khabir, there he is. For who? The Empire Morocco. Abdul Smith Al-Khabir has been elected Sultan by the people on May twelve, twenty twenty four. Who's the people who let him? Moroccans. And Vladimir Putin knows. He knows the Empire Morocco is emerging as a sovereign and independent state. He knows the Empire Morocco now has a competent authority sitting in the chairs of the government. And now the three branches of government along with the head of state, which is the Sultan again. So when the Sultan of Morocco, the Empire Morocco, sends out his correspondence maps, he'll send out one, maybe even two. If he don't hear word back, guess what's next? Sultan gonna move forward. Start acting laws that starts to do what? Summoning the Europeans to the table. If they don't adhere to the Sultan, guess what's next? Common law. The Consular Court's gonna get involved to force these treaties and force Moroccan law. So you can understand, as we continue to talk about Resolution fifteen fourteen, or the draft from the top, and we start to close out. Number four, Resolution fifteen fourteen, section four.
Number four, all armed action or repressive measures of all kinds directed against dependent peoples shall cease in order to enable them to exercise peacefully and freely their right to complete independence and the integrity of their natural territory shall be respected.
Section five.
Immediate steps shall be taken in trust in non-self-governing territories or all other territories which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their freely expressed will and desire without any distinction as to race, creed or color in order to enable them to enjoy complete independence and freedom.
Section six.
Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and the territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations.
Section seven.
All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the present declaration on the basis of equality, non-interference in the internal affairs of all states and respect for the sovereign rights of all peoples and their territorial integrity.
So, that's circle seven, state of facts. Means that the United States of America is cooked. I hear with that, it's long.
It's long.